...process of requesting an annexation to become part of the Fargo Public School. I am here today to present this to you because I'm looking for an insurance policy on this, if you will. It is possible that they will run out of money before the election can be held and the public speaks by their votes. And I, they are, representatives are here today to address that. We think that they will be able to make it until April, at least all the indications are, is my understanding of that. If we have a severe cut in state aid next month, that story could change. Mandatory annexations have time periods of events that have to occur within certain amounts of time and notices have to be given. So that is my purpose for being here today is I hope this never goes into fruition. I hope that they get through March and be able to pay all their bills, they have their election, the people speak, their, that is passed, they become part of Fargo in April on a date certain and we don't ever have to talk about this again. I am concerned that if that doesn't happen somewhere, if they run out of money, if the election is not successful, if there is a protest of the election results, that they are going to run out of money. And that's my purpose for bringing this here today, is to start the process so that the appropriate time periods and notices can be provided to individuals and that if the worst-case scenario comes about, we can act swiftly and correctly, quickly, to be able to ensure that the kids have a place to go. And that is my purpose today.
Fargo accepting Gage?
That is my understanding, yes. They would have had to, they would have had to have passed a resolution saying that they would accept them. And I have representatives here from-
Yes, the superintendent of Gage, I believe.
And, yeah, if you would like to come up and-
Come on up. Would you go ahead and help us introduce yourself and-
Will do.
Superintendent.
Please excuse my voice, I've been talking too much to miss Yolanda Downing. It is an honor, board members, to be in front of you. Under the circumstances, it's not so much so. Difficult to lose a school. Six years ago, I was down here, excuse me, because I wasn't any of them superintendent and this school was in a serious state of affairs. They'd had a superintendent that was, I won't say fraudulent, but was very difficult. And when I got there, if you will, how many of you remember the Academic Performance Index?
API.
API. When I got there, Gage School was a 592. If you recall, the state average was a 1,092.
Wow.
We were in the bottom 2% of the state. Difficult situation. School board asked me, said, "Try and fix this," and we did. They asked me to break up classrooms. We'd had combined classrooms for a number of years. We went from, before I got there, a 592, excuse me, in 10-11, we were as a school of 776, the state average was 1138. That was after I'd been there one year. We started dividing classes. And whenever I say that, our classes are small, they're a pre-K through A with 125 students, I'm a pre-K through 12 right now with 80. We do have a website.
Thank you.
And I have wealthy information and I gotta, I gotta thank Nancy Hughes and Laura, Matt, these folks, Renee McWaters, David, Yolanda, we have been on the phone with one another, I will say, since October. And if you will bear with me, as I gotta, I could spend a lot of time, but I won't. Laura, if I get too much, give me the signal, shut up. I can do that. This annexation process, we all are new at, and I'm sure you as members of the board are very new at. But over the course of the last six years, you can pull up A through F, Gage Public Schools is the highest in Ellis County, after six years.
What is it?
Elementary school has a B and our high school has an A minus.
Good job.
Right there it is. Excuse me. In May of last year, we started seeing a decline, I shouldn't say May, last January started seeing a decline of revenue just due to oil and gas. In Gage Public School, we are not the state aid dependent district, if you will, we are local revenues. We have ad valorem, gross production, motor vehicle, et cetera. Last January, everybody starts seeing $138 of oil deteriorate. And I have three board members that are oilfield men, and as everybody knows, in oil and gas industry, January, February, March, we take a decline, and hopefully April, May, it'll start improving and revenues will return. In May, we got our temporary appropriations, very consistent with what I had been through for the last five years at Gage at $1,348,000. I looked at that and I could see that it was consistent with what we had had, but I could see the oil and gas industry deteriorating. At the end of the school year, just through natural attrition, I'd lost a math teacher and an English teacher. I planned at that time to replace them both. As we are a small school, I only have one math teacher, one English teacher, one social studies teacher, et cetera. So we went out, I found a math teacher, we chose not to replace the English teacher because I had a workhorse, she's also working on her doctorate right now, she's my counselor, so now she is my high school English teacher counselor and my testing director. And so we didn't replace that one. I had one full-time custodial staff member, I let her go, just trying to soften the blow on kids. We did so. We only have, I think it's 14 or 15 certified staff members, counting myself. And in there, I was looking at, thinking, okay, do we combine back classes like Gage had done many years ago and take our students back to what I would say a failing grade? And school board members had bought into that, and we didn't want to do that last January, February, March, April, May. We didn't want to go there because we just struggled from a years of, I would say inadequate grades to, we are enjoying right now in Ellis County, saying, yeah, little old Gage, small school up there, saying we're the best in academia, which is great for us, been years. Anyway, we made our plan, we started our year. Things looked pretty good, I'm thinking, huh, it's gonna be tight. We get our appropriations, I get it in September, of course, we have our board meeting first week of the month, I get it after our September board meeting. And when I got this, dude, I about quit because whenever I reported it to my board in October, I said, "Guys, our budget was set in at $1,022,000, that's $326,000 less from May to September in a district that has four staff members." So I'm thinking, huh, let's cut some staff members, I have two cooks, gotta feed the darlings. I have one secretary and then one lady that just absolutely does everything else. I have an 83-year-old maintenance man and a 63-year-old maintenance man. I have one math teacher, one science teacher, one English teacher. Gentlemen talking about cutting to the bone, I'm telling you, we've cut into the bone. There isn't no meat left. Talked about state aid cuts, I have my calculation sheet, September, we don't get any money off the top side of the formula. That's no secret, we're a gross production school, local revenue school. On the bottom side of the formula, however, it's a little different story, being that we're small numbers and we have had really good local revenue. There's a bottom figure that my buddies out there, and these gentlemen may not have ever seen it either, and ladies, on the bottom side of the formula, it's called a penalty for per pupil revenue in excess of 150%. We had a little doc on it back in September of $4,200. In previous years, it cost us $35,000, whenever the state aid cut came through. January, it cost us $32,000 off the bottom side. Whenever the cut comes in, in a couple weeks, all you're gonna get from is $26,000, because that's all we got. So as I go back to our state aid calculation sheet, and that, Mr. Flanagan, you've probably studied it enough, I haven't studied it, but about 20 years, I'm sure there's a lot of people that can explain the state aid calculation sheet better than I am. Ms. Harriet LaGroon taught it to me, I consider her very, very knowledgeable, and it's difficult at best, but we made it through. But one thing I want to point out is our student enrollment has gone from about 180 to 80 students. And that right there, ladies and gentlemen, the only thing that is held without regard to student enrollment is your ad valorem. And in Ellis County, if you can see Gage right there, we have surrounding districts that's got $30 million property evaluations, mine's 9.7. You know, so our evaluations isn't, in today's market, not real good. Mr. Kenny pointed out that he and I have visited at length, along with Nancy and half the people in this room. Right now, to date, we've already expended about 71% of our total budget, and it doesn't take rocket science to figure out, we're not gonna make it. And the reason I threw up my red flags, because I do understand that if we exceed appropriations, the school board and myself can be held liable for two to three times the amount that we exceed appropriation. And I assured the school board that they would not be held liable for anything because this old cat was not gonna write the next check. When we meet a $1,022,000, the school will cease because I won't write any money. Which brings me to a little bit, again, we've sought different ways. We have some teachers' homes, we've got them on the auction block, anybody'd like to have a nice rental property. We have five houses in Gage, and we're looking to sell them all, and I know that building fund money's gotta stay in building fund, I'm fully aware of that, we are. So, anyway, right now, as it goes, all the crunching of numbers that we've done, we will meet April payroll, and somewhere in between April and May, if you guys want to come out and buy any houses, I will exceed appropriation or meet appropriation before my May payroll. So that's why we've hopefully set this in motion. We do have the mention of a annexation resolution, has been approved by Fargo, it was entertained in other schools, but Fargo come forth with an approved resolution. And on April 5th, if that vote was to go through and pass in this approved resolution, they have said they will take annexation money. And Fargo's a stable enough school right now that, you know, you spoke of, Matt spoke of a burden to another district. They have a really good tax base, so our budget won't affect them any, even if with our bond indebtedness, as far as buildings and stuff like that, Fargo's very aware of it. They have agreed to several things, but the most important thing to me is they've agreed to let our kids finish and pay my teachers. Thought I was a big tough guy, but no. Resolution's there, lots of local politics going on. We had a very good meeting Tuesday night, and hopefully, there's another one scheduled on March 22nd, and we can get the positive word out there because there's been oodles and oodles and mounds and mounds. Facebook, ugh. You will not find me on Facebook because of, well, it's just social media. But finance questions, I'm very fortunate to say we don't have any embellishment going on. We got struggles of our own, and I feel greatly for these folks, my goodness. But I would ask that, and I know Mr. Kenny and I spoke, that we give our local people the opportunity, and if that does not work, that you guys ensure my kids get to finish school and my teachers get paid.
Well, thank you, Superintendent, and I can tell you that each member of our board, really, that is our primary concern, is to not disrupt learning, to try to find a way to respect the community and their wishes, and to not set policies based on observation from the Capitol campus, but to work with those who are living in the community and to talk with them. So I can tell you that we know there's uncertainty, we don't know what that budget cut is going to be when it is passed down in a matter of weeks. So again, we don't know what will happen in the coming weeks to your budget. But I thank you very much for your presentation. Is there questions, board members, that you would have, Mr. Ross?
Yeah. Well, thank you for your speech. I think I better understand the emotional toll consolidation takes, but I do appreciate you and your team considering this option and recommending this option because it sounds like it's the best thing for the students and that's what, that's what you're there We talked a little bit about what consolidation or annexation looks like, and it's, there was some question about exactly what happens. Could you talk to us a little bit about what will happen logistically when you all consolidate with Gage? Have you talked with them, are they in favor of this, are they supportive of it, what's gonna happen to your physical school buildings?
The community of Fargo?
I mean Fargo, sorry.
Well, annexation, of course, is a different animal than consolidation. And that's one thing that everybody in school business right now today needs to fully understand, is what annexation is and what consolidation is, because it's two different things. Annexation, Fargo has agreed to, that they would like to have our gymnasium, because they only have one gymnasium. We have co-op sports with them for 15 years, we've co-op complete sports with them for the last three years, basketball, baseball, everything. So in that, in this agreement, we use our gym and their gym, and we've arranged our schedule so kids come over during the day and practice, we're only, what, nine miles apart? So they have agreed to, they want our gymnasium and cafeteria facility. I'll tell you this, our 1939 elementary, it's a 1939 elementary. When the wind blows hard out of the north, we have to set the buckets out under the window.
So your students will go to Fargo School?
A goodly number of them, yes, sir.
The ones that don't will go to another-
They'll likely, we, they, some of them transfer to Shattuck, you know, Shattuck, Fargo, our local area, we'll have some that may even go south to Arnett.
Okay.
And again, that also coincides with the open transfer.
So how is this different than, and I'm just trying to learn, how is it different than consolidation in your opinion, I mean, the annexation versus consolidation?
Consolidation, nutshell, please feel free to correct me if I make an error. Consolidation means that two schools simultaneously vote to close their district and simultaneously open as a consolidated district. Annexation means two school boards put together a proposal, and like my school board-
Goes away.
We pass it, Fargo passed theirs, it come to Superintendent Hoffmeister, she says, or the State Department, they stamp and say, "This is a good resolution, agreement." And she calls for an election, that will be April 5th, and April 5th, if our people vote and it's a yes, after the contesting period, our board is over, we no longer exist as Gage Public Schools. And that's, that is a difficult situation at best.
So you all decided before this, though, how, what was gonna happen with your buildings and your students, I mean, this is all written out, so everyone in the community understands?
Yes, and I have some documentation, if you'd like to have that.
Sue, could you tell us what that feels like then, while we're on the topic, when there are consideration and talk about consolidation based on just arbitrary factors at the Capitol? And, you know, I think that I've been on record saying that I do think we have too many districts in Oklahoma, that we can look at other districts, that other states that have far greater numbers but fewer districts, but that it's so important that we are working with communities in the planning of that. And I think you've really explained just how much is the, just the emotion that is involved in this, and I think it's certainly a topic that's being discussed and has been, at least in the last few weeks. And so you were just kind of giving a little bit of a overview of what that means to have voluntary consolidation and then annexation. Is there anything else that you want to add?
It's a, it's an uphill struggle, and I would tell any school out there that they'd better buckle up, because I'm telling you, it's, community-wise, you know, and I, I could speak for hours, so please, just, you know, tell me, yeah, you're done. You gotta, I mean, this goes back all the way to 1968 in the Save Our Schools, Save Rural Schools movement, and it began in Gage. And that's, I've got a history book, I went back and looked it up, you know, because not stepping on any toes, don't want to, you know, cause any problems. You know, in rural America, it takes more dollars per child than it does in larger districts. That's the nature of the beast, you know? I grew up out in the Panhandle, there's three counties out there. And I use Gage, and it's kind of cutting my nose off, spitting my own face, Gage in northwest Oklahoma, as much as I love the little town and school, we're the last district probably that, that has room for this process. Because we do have Shattuck to the west and Fargo School directly to the east, and it's within 10 miles, both of them. You can, if you could expand that a little bit, you take the Arnett School District, you know, they go far enough south that, you know, children riding the bus, I had a niece and a nephew that went to Arnett many years ago, and they'd ride the bus an hour one way. You know, that's pretty difficult for a six-year-old. And that goes, you know, I'm not picking on eastern Oklahoma, you know, there's schools closer and closer together, but you get out in western Oklahoma, and it's a whole different animal because you've got such miles. And that's a whole nother conversation. But, you know, you go back to 1968 and Save Rural Oklahoma, because that's where I live and I grew up and I'm passionate about. We gotta have schools. So yes, it's gonna cost more per child, because we may only have eight or 10 kids in a classroom, and in some cases, three or four, but those kids deserve the best teacher they can get. And they don't, I don't believe they need combined classrooms, because I taught a math class several years ago where I had Algebra I and Algebra II, if there's very many teachers in the classroom, you've been through that situation. And for one year in a high school class, you can get by with that, but you and I'll, you can write it down or you want to write it, you can't put it in first and second grade when the most formative year for reading, first grade, and combine that and expect a child to do their very best. And in today's world of accountability and testing, you can't take the fifth and sixth graders and put them together and expect the fifth grade to test where a group of students that have their own teacher to test at. You just can't do it. So that's why the board and I, you know, you know, my board members, he lost his whole, one of them lost his whole business, you know? Western Oklahoma, I could take you to Woodward, and if you could zoom in on Woodward, I could just count you business after business, this is gone, you know? Good friend of mine runs Jay and Art Trucking, he's down 70%. And, you know, I, that's what I've told people in my community, because it is emotional and stressful, my goodness. They want to point fingers. Ladies and gentlemen, our oil and gas industry, or our schools that are gross production reliant, it's, and you know, this, this didn't happen overnight, no. Whenever you get into this, these guys are talking about using up their carryovers now. I used mine up last year to finish from January through the year, a goodly portion of it. And now, it's gone. And that's what schools are facing today, they're using up everything they've saved just to make it through. And currently, as it is right now, the revenue shortfall we got statewide, you know, there's gonna be schools out there that are beautiful, wonderful schools and communities that are likely not gonna make it. So State Department, you, members of the board, you guys have got a difficult job. This is gonna be stressful. And I know I didn't help much, but yeah.
I got one question for you.
Sure.
When did the semester start and when is school out this year?
Our school, we will graduate kids, we're kind of early, our school's out there, we kind of, so we can all go to each other's graduations. My last day with kids, I think, is early May, May the 10th, I think we're graduating on Saturday and Friday and-
Yeah, we're right in the middle of the semester.
Yes, sir.
My boy.
Yes, sir, we've still got March, April, May, June, yeah.
Yeah, we're just roughly halfway in the middle of it.
Yes, sir.
That's why I wanted to ask.
Are there other questions, board members? Thank you very much, Superintendent.
Thanks, ma'am.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you all.
All right, and Mr. Kenny? Is there a, is there a motion that we need to consider or-
One question.
Okay, sure.
Where is the funding for the shortage gonna come from to fund this gap in order to get to year end?
The funding.
If they do-
We are all asking that. I don't think, I don't think there is a-
There's not a source.
Are you talking about the liability?
The liability.
The consolidation fund?
Are you talking about the annexation fund?
Well, they can't finish out the school year, how do we get to the end of the school year finished out?
That's why the annexation will happen.
It's immediate.
It's gonna come from Fargo?
Yeah.
It's gonna come from Fargo.
Absolutely, from the receiving, from the receiving district, yes.
Board members, if I can just interject real quickly here, as part of your board materials, if I can direct you to the tab D for David, as Superintendent said, the last few pages set forth the process of how this would play out, including the liabilities and assets of Gage going to Fargo.
Okay.
What page?
Third page from the end is where the resolution begins.
And David, as I understand, the timing is basically early March is when the-
Well, based on what I've heard today, and tell me if I'm wrong, we can make it through April. Yeah, we can make the April payroll. So I was concerned about maybe March not being able to do it, that doesn't seem to be a possibility, at least in your mind, that we can get through April, or get to April.
We will, we'll- We will, we'll, we're going to get to April.
Okay.
I believe that the April payroll, which will be our ad valorem, our six-month ad valorem checks coming in. May is going to be the.
Absolutely.
So we can wait and see if the resolution passes, then at the March board meeting.
Well, we won't know that the resolution, the election's not till April fifth, April fifth.
And that is assuming that there are no cuts.
Right.
Additional cuts, which we know are also coming. So that's why we believe it's important that we set up this meeting and this item on the agenda today to have no lag time in reacting to something that doesn't go as planned by Gage and Fargo. Is that correct?
So David, are you asking for action today?
I am.
To, and it's predicated on the resolution not passing, that we would take the action.
In April, yeah, that we would, we would start the proceeding for mandatory annexation and that we would have that hearing at the April board meeting. I think by having it at the April board, I'm looking, if we had that meeting at the April board meeting, that would let us be, yeah, we will know by then and then that will get the kids where they need to go to finish up school.
I would so move.
And that all appropriate notices be sent out to all interested parties. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, any questions?
Now I got one question. Now my question on funding. If we're, if we're at that stage, where does the funding come from this, in the school year?
It would be the receiving school district that received them. They get the assets and the liability. If it fails, then we direct where they're going to be consolidated or where they're going to be annexed into.
Okay, but where do we get the funding?
There is no funding for us.
Fargo, we would be mandating, Fargo would be paying for it.
Unfunded mandate.
Well, if they get the asset, well. They get the assets and the liabilities. That's part of the, I mean, the receiving, I'm looking at Nancy, the receiving district receives the assets and the liabilities.
I was going to say, I thought there was a. How much do you get when you consolidate?
Five to six million and the five million in the school consolidation.
There's a fund that they can tap into to pay some of those expenses.
Okay, that's where I was getting.
I thought when you consolidate, you get an award of money.
Yes, there's.
I think there's a limited amount of money in that fund.
That can be drawn down, is it five or six million?
Okay, so, but yes.
And that also, I mean, we understand, we've been talking a lot about Fargo, that, and that is the plan based on the community right now. If it is passed by the community, because it requires a vote of the community, is that correct?
Oh, both communities?
The, if it is mandatory annexation, that consolidation fund does not kick in. It has to be voluntary. But the receiving district would take on the liabilities.
So if Gage votes to do it, then they get.
So that would be up to this board.
They can access the money. If they don't, if the vote fails, then we mandate the annexation, but they get no money.
They get the assets and the liabilities of the district.
Right, but they don't get access to this pool of money available for consolidation.
And there may be a time window that is clearly this is coming at a time of great uncertainty and is just going to have to play out for us to know.
That's an important notion to let your community know.
Well, but, and you can also see that they, they, that based on the cuts that are coming, that is the uncertainty right now, to know if that district will be able to survive into April for that vote. So that was our desire to bring this to you was just so that there would be no lag in case we need to take action before, before that.
Is there such a legal option as consolidation or are we really, is it annexation? Or is there a legal process for both annexation and consolidation?
There's a legal process for both.
And I think not now, but let's do learn the difference. I'd like to know the difference.
I think that's a great point. In fact, at the, at the next board meeting, we'll have a presentation for you.
Or just maybe a little memo, one pager, it doesn't need to be a presentation.
All right, very good, thank you, very good point. So we have a motion, we have a second, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Superintendent Hoffmeister?
Yes, right, motion carries. Now we are on eight E.